Good morning, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started. It is 8:31, so we're going to call the meeting to order. Good morning, and thank you for joining us for the Board of Commissioners Finance Committee meeting. We're going to start with public comment. If there's anyone from the public wishing to comment, good morning.
Hey, everyone. I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. First off, I want to thank Ben Green and everyone on the Kent County Board that did sign our support sheet for the Community Hub. I did collect 100 signatures already. I even got our U.S. Senator staffs. I was at the Gerald R. Ford Presidential because I am one of the Ford Fellows, if y'all didn't know. And I was there listening to some of our former governors and lieutenant governors and stuff like that, and didn't know that Governor Engler was on the board, and he was the actual one that was pushing for esports. Also, I'm very thankful to announce that some cool synergies I've been able to build with a party called Platform. As you guys know, the COO actually handled a trillion-dollar PIF portfolio and designed that portfolio also. And I got this organization party partnering with Ohio State University. I know how vital Ohio State is to the Republicans. And so, the cool thing about this is they're going to be using this platform that I introduced Ohio State to to actually educate the students where they'll be earning college credits towards their degree. So anybody that didn't sign, it's okay. But the people that did, I'll never forget because I know I'm going to be very rich as I'm influenced the college system. I'm influenced the college system. My birthday is in nine days, and I want to say happy birthday, Princess Diana. Some beautiful people born in July, even Dee Jones and Gerald R. Ford and all of these other cool people, born in July, but my birthday is in nine days. And I'm very happy because I've done a lot of beautiful things. I know I'm going to be a star. People say you're a celebrity, Dee Jones, a local celebrity, all of that stuff, but I don't get into that. I just focus on the vision, the global goals, and thinking of the speech I'll give in 2026 at the United Nations, as I've already spoke at the United Nations this year, and I didn't even write that speech down, and it was fire. I ain't even write this down. I'm just thinking and I'm speaking. But I'm looking forward to actually look at the Van Andel fiscal presentation because I like fiscals, and fiscal years usually start in July. My season, cancer season, very exciting stuff. But yeah, I'm excited because also Michigan State University is going to be partnering with this organization party, which the COO handled a trillion-dollar portfolio, and right now they're looking at a 5K to $50,000 partnership. I get 10% of every single partnership that they ink. I've already did like 80 intros. Y'all gonna add that up one day? No, I'mma add that up, but I'll probably give some to Kent County or the stuff that I'm doing is going to influence Kent County. I'm going to be a trillionaire one day. I'm going to be a billionaire, trillionaire. I'm going to be super rich, and I'm never going to fake it. I'm not faking it. I'm truly thankful for Ben Green. Me and Ben Green had conversations at the soccer stadium and all of that stuff, and he said, Dee Jones, once you get richer, you're going to give back. You need to. And because Ben's Green support me and I like Ben Green, I'll be sure to do that. Thank you, Ben Green, for signing this because yesterday I was at the Mayor's Mondays, and he's 100% backed behind the Community Hub. So if you guys did not sign that, it's okay. I'm not going to give you another chance to, but thankful for everything I'm doing for Kent County, and I'm going to be a trillionaire one day. Put that on record, on record, trillions and Donald Trump voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else on public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion.
So moved by Commissioner Oliver King, supported by Commissioner Green. Is there any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion passes. We will move on then to special order of business, and we're welcoming this morning the Grand Rapids Kent County Convention and Arena Authority, Rich McKeegan and Rick Wynn. Good morning.
Good morning. That's hard to follow, but we'll do our best. First, I am a county appointee, so I appreciate that. Thank you for that. And we do have some slides for a year in review that Rich and his team have put together, so we'll get started right away in the interest of time.
Probably, well, first, good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to spend some time with you. It is appreciated. There's a lot of information here. You've got it to go over. If there's stuff you want to go back on, feel free. Probably going to get through it fairly quickly, and then if there's questions, happy to try and provide answers. Start at the arena. The rink continues to be one of the busiest little buildings in North America. A number of rankings have us no lower than sixth over the last 28 years for venues 10 to 15,000 capacity. This, you're looking at 2025 versus 2024 fiscal years, business down a little bit. By the same token, the industry is down a little bit. This summer, you're going to see a lot more stadium concerts, which take a lot of artists, may not be the headliner, but it might be one or two or three of the supporters, takes them out of the arena business for a little while. So a little bit slower at the rink. Attendance-wise continues to be really, really solid. I think you're well aware, we've got three tenants up, excuse me, the Griffins, the G League Gold, and the Rise, professional volleyball team. Financially, another very good year. Last year was one of our best ever. This looks like it will be close to, if not, our best ever. Some highlights over the course of the year. That Alan Jackson show was a big deal. I think he only played eight markets. We were by far the smallest market on the tour. It is our goal always to try and secure shows that are playing bigger venues, bigger markets, and it's our goal when we're talking at settlement with the promoters and the managers, we want to be top third, top quartile of their entire tour regardless of size and market or building. And I guess worthy of note, too, Two Nights of Billy Strings, sold out, local guy, a real big deal for this community. A couple of items of note, Savers, our food and beverage provider at the arena. We have a program where we've got volunteer groups providing concession staffing. That is equated to over $1.5 million in cash to these local nonprofits just from that fiscal year, and we're already, as of May, up close to 800,000. I think as the county being one of the owners, one of the parents of the arena, the convention center and the theater, I think that should be a point of pride that all of us should have. And if the question becomes, what does it do for us? What does it do for the community? Here's a real good illustration of what it does. And the theater continue to be very busy as well. Event days quite solid. You'll probably know we have four arts tenants, opera, ballet, symphony, and Broadway Grand Rapids. They take up the lion's share of the events, and then we stuff everything and anything we can in there over and above that. Attendance-wise, another really solid year. Again, event income, a good year. And some of the highlights. I was just talking prior to the meeting, Broadway continues to do really, really strong. We've become well-known in New York in that industry. Few of us who are responsible for booking this facility as well as the arena do business in New York on somewhat regular basis. The last three or four years, it's been a point where as soon as they see the name tag with Grand Rapids on it or hear DeVos Performance Hall, the New York folks are well aware of what's going on here, and it's primarily Broadway-driven. The convention center continues to do well. This is the one piece of business post-COVID that maybe took the longest to bounce back, but we feel that it's pretty much back there. There's a longer runway needed to book conventions and trade shows, so it takes a little bit longer to get these pieces in place, but very happy with how the business has come back. Attendance-wise, another solid year. I should note, too, financially, to have these three buildings be operationally as well as capital self-sufficient is extremely rare. Most venues like the arena, like DeVos Performance Hall and DeVos Place, require subsidies from some type of governmental entity, usually six to seven figures annually, and that's just operationally, let alone capital. So it is a very unique position for all of us to be in by having these facilities completely self-sufficient financially. Some notes of, or some events of note. We've got a number of initiatives that we are able to participate within the ASM Global family. This is just some of them. It allows the venues to benefit from some leveraging of our volume and size for best pricing, and that doesn't necessarily mean we go with the preferred vendor from an ASM perspective, but it does allow us to bring that pricing locally and saying match it to continue to do business with local or regional folks. Our marketing folks are very, very involved relative to the community. It's becoming more and more of an important aspect to the touring artists, so I'm just going to zip through these, but if you see an artist that you have an interest in, take a look at just some of the stuff that we do to try and get the artist more, what, more awareness as well as get some positive interaction with the community. A year, maybe 15, 20 years ago, Cher was touring, and we asked her agent what would she like as a gift. It is very common for venues to provide a gift to the artist. The line was, you know what? The jerseys and the flowers, it's all very nice, a donation. That's really what she would like. So we did that donation. The response was very positive. Subsequently, since then, the CIA, through their operations at the arena, have funded a donation to be made in the name of an artist. We do some research to find out what they may have a passion or an interest in, provide a donation to them, as well as try and find a matching charity to benefit from as well. And then we provide just a simple paper certificate acknowledging the donation. It continues to be extremely well-received. This is just a couple of those folks holding those certificates. Put a lot of money into the building. You'll see at the arena, new scoreboard, very well-received, boxcar design, so different look. It's got more usable face than anything else we've had before, and it's been integrated nicely in the in-game presentation for all three sports tenants. Also, a bunch of new carpet at the convention center. It's an expensive proposition, and it's something that needs to be done on a regular basis, but if you're not keeping up with it, it becomes noticeable to the clients. Touching base on what's new and upcoming, again, well aware with the amphitheater, bottom-left is somewhat recent. It looks like an amphitheater. There's no doubt about it now when you walk by. 12,000 capacity. It's, looks really, really interesting from a booking perspective. It's getting a lot of chatter amongst the agents and the managers. We've probably got half a dozen to 10 shows already on the books for the '26 season, so it feels very, very good, the direction we're heading in. Soccer stadium, ground has now been broken, obviously opens up a year later. What has been announced is MLS Next Pro, so that is the league that the team will play in. Pretty much the, well, the MLS, I think, is viewed as the top soccer league in North America. This would be just under that, so call it a AAA or an AHL version of soccer. Very excited by how that's coming together and hopeful that, I think, the next announcement likely will be the team name and/or logo and colors, and that's probably another few With that, happy to take questions. I know it's a lot of stuff to go through, but again, delighted to be here.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions this morning? Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation. It sounds like things have really rebounded since COVID, and that's really great to see. I love, I've been involved in the volunteer program at Van Andel for the concession staffers, and I have to say that's a great program, and it provides nice returns for the nonprofits that engage in that, so I'm glad to see that that's going well and that there's been so such large donations coming from that. Convention Center comeback is also, I mean, that's great. I mean, now we're not where we were previously, but it sounds like we're making steady progress, which is awesome, so you all are doing great work, and I love the idea of artist donations in lieu of gifts. That's just really awesome to see that there's a big community benefit that comes from that, so glad to see what you're doing there. I, I'm excited about all of the new things that are happening with the soccer stadium and the convention center and, you know, the increased capacity and shows that are coming to Van Andel and all of that. I just wonder about the sustainability plan. Do you guys have a sustainability plan for all of the waste generated at your facilities? I know that, you know, with the soccer stadium and the amphitheater, you know, the waste that is generated at these facilities is really the same type of waste. It's not, you know, like lots of differences between them, and I know that, I believe that you all are using a vendor for waste that doesn't have any sort of waste management, excuse me, any sustainability sort of practices related to some of these materials. I just wonder, what is the plan? What is the sustainability plan? Because this all looks great, but I didn't see anything like addressing that in the presentation, and just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit.
We can absolutely provide that, Commissioner. We do have one. The, we have had an issue with trying to keep front-of-house the waste separated, so recycling cardboard waste, cross-contamination almost becomes, especially at the arena, becomes an issue. So, and again, I'm certain you're familiar with it. When you've got a certain amount of cross-contamination, now your whole efforts are gone. We are doing an awful lot in the F&amp;B space, especially at the arena. The cooking oil all gets recycled, repurposed. We have a process where we're separating cardboard for the amphitheater. I know I just put some, or I just signed something relative to the haulers that will come in, and our plan is to separate cardboard, the garbage, which I think all the garbage, all the garbage through Kent County is incinerated and turned into power, so I believe that's the case. So there's an opportunity there to identify that even what is being put into the waste system turns out to be positive. So we've got, I think, cardboard cans and garbage separated, those three, as well as oil. We're also doing a little bit of composting at the arena, and we will be starting that up at the amphitheater as well. We have a year now to, sorry, we have a year for the amphitheater open up to see how that flows, and we'll look to learn from that and adjust that for the soccer stadium as well.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. I would ask that maybe in future presentations that you guys do, that you address that because I think that that is pretty important to just make sure that the community understands that there are some sustainability efforts in place and that you are considering that with all of the expansions and the great things that you're doing. It's good to know that that is part of the plan, so.
You should know, Commissioner McLeod, twofold. Some of the touring artists, that's a priority to them, so we have to be deliberate and actually get that, get some of that information to them before they actually commit to playing the date. Similarly, with the convention meeting planners. It's not every client we have, but a number of them want to know exactly what's going on. We have had better luck at the convention center with the separation of waste on the front-of-house side, so you will see at the convention center a number of receptacles that have the different slots for garbage, paper, or plastic.
We have the same issue in hotels. I think the good news is there's a, there are a lot more products that are coming out that are biodegradable, so, and there's a lot more businesses providing that, so.
Price point's getting better.
Yeah, and the price point is much better than it used to be, so I think incorporating that into the mix will help.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, and thank you for your presentation, Rich and Rick, and thank you for all the work. I know these numbers look great, but there's a lot of effort that goes on behind the scenes, and most of you are responsible for that. So, a couple of questions on particularly the convention center. I know that the numbers are a little bit down, projected to be at 95. It continues to be a highly competitive, challenging task to make that successful. Can you just talk a little bit about what are the key greatest challenges or hurdles you deal with, whether it's facilities or hotels or outside activities? What is it that you are dealing with to make that successful, and what can the county do?
There's no issue with the hotels.
No, of course not. The ones we have are just tremendous.
Exactly. So, the, this community, and I know you hear it a lot from a lot of different people, but probably because it's true, it's very unique. We hear from clients that at times are even angry at us because we're all saying the same thing, being the venue, the hotel community, and the convention and Visitors Bureau Experience Grand Rapids. Usually, a client is able to pit one or two against the other to try and garner either more financing, more support, whatever the case may be. That hasn't been the case here. So it is a huge advantage in that respect. I think when the convention center opened 20-plus years ago, it probably was too big for the community, but it's been nice to grow into. We're bumping up against capacity there. I think right now, if you ask, Rick and I were talking about this on the way over, if you ask our sales team, and we've now had two studies done by CSL, Convention Sports and Leisure, to identify what is needed in that space, meeting space, ballroom space, that's what's needed most right now. I think right directly behind that is another full-service convention hotel. That is another big need that was identified pre-pandemic as what should happen next, so the potential there is to put a convention hotel in the community, full service, that also has ballroom slash meeting room space. We feel, based on the studies as well as what we're hearing from our sales teams, we feel that that next level will build us up so that then convention center expansion becomes the following piece to that. The airport has upgraded its game tremendously. Thank you very much. I think that's an asset that was maybe a detractor to getting people here 15, 20 years ago and is now absolutely, especially with the new construction that's going on, it's now an attractor. We continue to, I would say, punch above our weight as we're competing with other markets for events. We have recovered much better than many other, even most other markets, post-COVID as a community and as an industry, so that has been a competitive advantage. I think because others have a tougher time, they're getting more aggressive from an incentive perspective, so we continue to navigate that. I think the biggest thing we're, we need right now is more ballroom space specifically, and I know, I know we as a community, we're talking about a new convention hotel pre-COVID. I think that conversation, and I know Experience Grand Rapids would support it, should become front burner again.
Yeah, I would add that since COVID, more and more national groups are looking for a regional, maybe smaller venue that they perceive is safer, cleaner, they're trying to get away from Chicago's and Minneapolis's and New York, wherever. So we're getting more interest in larger groups, and with that, they need more space and so, to me. So I think that's some of the pressure that we're seeing, and, which is a good thing, but yeah, that's, that's what's happening today, so.
So is more ballroom space only by additional or construction of new facilities or converting existing space?
I don't think we've got space that we can convert in the existing building. What we do have, when the building opened, there was an entire bank of meeting rooms that structural steel is in place for, that isn't done, so there's probably another 20,000 square feet in meeting room space. That would be if you're up on the Skywalk level and you come all the way across, then start to walk towards the river. On the right-hand side there, the steel is in place for another bank of meeting rooms. So if you're in the large exhibit hall, it would look like a bulkhead off that south entrance. So ideally, a new hotel with more meeting room space, ballroom space, as well as building that out, because from a client perspective, it's all got to be in the same general area. So that would be the ideal situation.
Okay. One more? So with the amphitheater, have you disclosed the inaugural show yet?
We knew that was going to be.
We, a committee, Grand Action is forming a committee, I just got an email yesterday, the day before, to look at the, kind of the pre-opening, the grand opening celebrations. I've been lucky enough to be here for 27 years plus now, so I know what that looked like from the DeVos Place perspective, and I know I heard what that looked like from the arena's perspective, so I would foresee something very similar, where we'd have major open houses, self-guided tours, free popcorn, free hot dogs, that sort of stuff. I've had a number of conversations with the symphony. They have a strong interest in being part of a lot of things in the community, but opening up the amphitheater and potentially using the amphitheater is part of those conversations, so I would see a lot of that type of activity. The, one of the benefits with our relationship with Live Nation is that a number of things are getting slotted in because they've got the tours and they're slotting them in, so that's been spectacular. If we go the route, and we're exploring all of this now with, in essence, quote-unquote, buying an artist to open the facility, that buying price versus a touring price usually is two, three, four times what the touring price is. So to do that math makes it a little tougher, but we are exploring it. So, Commissioner Stack, I did not answer your question.
I was just going to say that's pretty good.
But I did say something.
To come soon, though, right?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
It's a weird way to ask for tickets. Immediate pass, Chair Stack. I appreciate the presentation, guys. Thank you for the work that you do. I'd love to chat a little bit more offline. I have way too much to go in through today. I don't want to keep everybody here, but on the convention hotel and that conversation, but I just had a really high-level question. The, I noticed that the, saw the announcement from the West Michigan Golf Show that they're no longer going to be putting that show on, and I just wanted to know if that's kind of unique to that show, or is that a challenge that we're seeing in other retail, kind of more retail-forward shows? When I go to those shows, I like to go to a lot of them. There's not a whole lot else to do. Sorry, XGR, in the winter, but, so, I, I just hope that's not a trend that we're seeing elsewhere, but I imagine there's shifts in the programming there.
So, I want to make sure that I'm not perceived as speaking for Showspan. Showspan produces, I think, as many as nine of the consumer shows that we host, as well as other shows throughout the state and in the Milwaukee area. They are the producers, we're the producers for the golf show. I think the golf industry has been unique because despite its growth nationally as a sport, participation sport, the industry's seen a lot of amalgamation and/or smaller mom-and-pop stuff kind of going out of business. I think a good comparison is the Sport Fishing and RV Show. So you've got a number of outfitters and/or fishing locations that come down here to do the show, but they might be two, three, eight hours away. That has continued, whereas the golf show, it has become, there's been less of the actual folks exhibiting, less exhibitors. So Showspan made the difficult decision, and this was just, as you referenced, announced, but we've been talking about them for a little while. If you did go to the golf show last year, I think it was maybe half the size that it had been in the past. I think the other piece is, as Rick and I have referenced, relative to us getting more and more interest from a large regional or national perspective, finding dates is a little bit more difficult for some of those consumer shows. Overall, the consumer show business was pretty good this year, so I feel good about that, but the golf show, just having a tough time. We've already heard from a couple of different people who may have an interest in doing a golf show. I just don't know if it can pencil for them. We're, we're exploring that right now.
Great. That's, that's helpful. Thank you. I was at the first Griffins game in '96, so I'm looking forward to whatever we do in the, I won't tell anybody how old I was, so I think a lot of people feel old, but yeah, looking forward to the opening of the amphitheater. Thank you.
Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you. Great presentation. In fact, I wish you had had my favorite artist up there you had common here. He was awesome. Okay, but back to my question. Whenever I see this, which is really great for our community, I always think about parking. So how are you addressing the issue of parking with all of this expansion? And, but you said that Grand Rapids is becoming much more of a walkable community than driving our cars, and can you speak to that?
So, a couple of things relative to the venues we have now. Undoubtedly, the city is growing and parking is becoming. is growing and parking is becoming more expensive. I think the lion's share of parking that is downtown and walkable to the existing buildings is actually very complimentary to what our needs are, because primarily, it's being used Monday to Friday, nine to five, whereas our needs are evenings and weekends. So the community, in my opinion, is benefiting from getting a strong double dip of use of the existing parking. So the arena, yes, people bemoan the price, but the access to parking continues to be very, very good. The arena only controls about 140 spots in Area 2 directly behind the arena, and the majority of those are provided to suite holders. So in theory, or conceptually, the CAA has no control over parking, yet the arena works fairly well. For the two new venues, a couple of things to keep in mind. I think a lot of the parking that is currently used at the arena will be complimentary to the amphitheater. Over and above that, the, the development that is being looked at at the Charlie's Crab site, as well as adjacent to the amphitheater site, will very likely have parking, and that parking will very likely be complimentary to the stadium or the amphitheater's use as the existing parking is. The other piece is, I think we as a community benefit from having people on the street walking to and from these facilities. When the arena opened, since the arena opened, save the first two years when I was not here, we've been getting phone calls from people and elsewhere in the community saying, hey, we love what you're doing with your entertainment district. We'd love to try and duplicate this. We, the whole idea of an entertainment district didn't exist 30 years ago. LA Live built this whole region around them, and that's been copied and done elsewhere. I would argue, we've had that even before it was a thing, and that's been one of the benefits for both the theater and the arena's success, is that people enjoy being out, the connectivity to everything else downtown. I think the amphitheater and the soccer stadium will also benefit from that. We continue to look at a potential pedestrian bridge that would connect the west side to the amphitheater site. That would then open up access to parking on the GVSU lots, which I think would be spectacular, because once again, a lot of that would be complimentary to their current needs. And then at the soccer stadium, the Y and GVSU have reached an agreement with Grand Action's assistance, so that now a lot of that GVSU parking, a skywalk will be constructed over the train tracks, so that there's the safest possible means to get from A to B. I think there's going to be a lot of ability for parking at the soccer stadium there. And then, as you're probably well aware, the whole march-to-the-match thing is a big deal in soccer. The idea of people congregating at a local establishment to get hyped up for the game, and then to walk en masse to the soccer stadium, it almost works best, best if it's five or six blocks, and then they're picking up people along the way. So, and over and above that, we're Uber, Lyft, bicycle parking, scooter parking, all of that is being incorporated into our master plan from a transportation perspective. The, the benefits that we've seen at the arena, I think, will extend to these two new ventures as well.
Yeah, I would, I would add again, people forget that there's a little bit of drinking going on in the arena and amphitheater. So a lot of people just get a room, park at the hotels, and then walk to the venue. So it's increasingly more and more, and that helps the parking as well. So.
And I guess I'm glad the hotel guy brought that up, because it is, in the convention space, those rooms are contracted, so they're very trackable. It's more word-of-mouth and/or rough data that you can point to. But when we do two-night disability strings, every hotel in the county is doing really, really well, because we've got people coming in. They're almost like the Grateful Dead fans, Deadheads. They come in, and they're going to both shows, and they're spending two or three nights. And we've seen that with a lot of the concerts that we do at the arena.
That's great. So thank you for answering that question. Can you talk about staffing? I would imagine with all of this expansion, you're going to need more staff, of course. Are you hiring more locally, or, you know, can you speak to that?
So the, the nice thing with these two new venues is that their seasons are complimentary to when we're busiest at the arena and the convention center and the theater. So we will, we already are expanding our full-time staff, but maybe not to the extent that you might think. Right now, we're about 80 FTEs under direct ASM Global contract or management. We're probably going to grow that to closer to 90, 95, when it's all said and done, especially if you incorporate food and beverage. The part-time staffing, we continue to try and figure out the best way to move that forward. And all of these full-time positions, they're posted throughout the ASM Global network, they're posted throughout the industry, and also, we post very aggressively locally. So our retention rate is quite high, which is nice. So yes, continue to focus on local. We feel good about the plan we have relative to staffing. I think we need to get a little bit better with some of our event staff and stagehands, for example. They do a spectacular job. We continue to work with them to beef up who they've got on their roles, so that we can handle a weekend where we've got something going on at all three venues.
Commissioner Halsted.
So I know there's standards and things for handicap accessibility, but outside of those very basic standards, there's a lot of things that can be done to help those people. Are you working with any organizations in the area that can help you meet the needs of those people in a finer way?
We, we continue to work with disability advocates, and I would say, not just because of these new buildings, like, they do an audit with us every once in a while. We also just had a group who, from a meeting planner perspective, look to almost accreditate your community, hotels included, to make sure that either groups that are disability-focused or have attendees who have needs feel comfortable that, yes, this venue, this opportunity, this market works well for you. So we've continued to do that. Over and above that, I know disability advocates, as well as the architects, as well as a couple of subject matter experts, relative to the design of both the amphitheater and the soccer stadium, have been involved in the design and planning process to make sure that not only are we at code, but we exceed code, and we can provide it as positive an experience as possible to those guests that need some assistance.
Fantastic. I'm glad to hear that. Didn't ever realize until I had a husband in a wheelchair for a year and a half, how inaccessible things really are. So that's good that you're doing that. And the other question I had, had to do with the sound issues within. Has all of that been addressed? Like, will it affect other venues that are around that may be having stuff, whether it be indoors or outdoors, with the bass, with different things? What kind of precautions or standards have you got set for that?
I know Grand Action is working with the city and has a sound consultant, and I believe that is now set. And a number of studies were done. It actually changed design a couple of times to improve the acoustics. The vibe I get is that while, yes, there may be moments of large sound, it's not all that different than a lot of what's happening currently in downtown Grand Rapids, be that vehicular traffic on the streets around the highway, or sounds emanating from a restaurant or a bar.
Any other questions from commissioners this morning? Okay. Thank you so much for joining us and for your presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate being here and being asked. Thank you very much.
Okay. We will now move on to Agenda Item 5, our action items. Agenda Item 5A, Department, from the Department of Public Works, refuse disposal system bonds reimbursement.
All right. We have action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to approve a resolution allowing the county and the Department of Public Works to reimburse expenses paid prior to the issuance of refuse disposal system bond series 2005 from bond proceeds. And a few summary points. This is for, to reimburse work on our three landfills in Kentwood, North Kent and South Kent, and not to exceed $11 million. And this bond resolution would come back before the Board for approval. And Dara's with us this morning for any detailed questions you may have.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Stack, supported by Commissioner Halsted. Comments or questions on this item? Commissioner McLeod.
No, thank you, Chair. I just wondered what the, what the costs, the costs were. I don't, I didn't see that part in there, the costs that are, will be charged to the bond.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chair Keel. We haven't determined what that cost will be, however, the way we've set up the contract with the company that will be doing the design-build of the PFAS treatment facilities is that Phase 1 is about $1.2 million to do the, the design of the treatment facilities and equipment. Once that's complete, we'll have a 75% design that will help us then establish that guaranteed maximum price. And once that guaranteed maximum price for the entire project is determined, that's when we'll come back to our Board of Public Works for review and approval. That recommendation will then come back to this board for approval and then ultimate financing. So roughly about a million and two upfront. But once we get through that design, if for some reason we decide that the cost isn't what we were expecting, or there's some other challenges in the project, then we don't need to proceed. This just allows us to be able to charge back for expenses related to the project prior to bonds actually being issued.
Okay. Thank you. So that, that helps. And is that about the, I don't know how often you do these sorts of, you know, projects related to the landfills, but is that about what you would expect in terms of startup costs to get this project going?
We typically, in, in the past, this is the first time that we've actually, and since I've been director, that we've come to our Board of Public Works and the Board of Commissioners for a bond approval. But because of the size of this project, we're treating out PFAS at the North Kent landfill, both groundwater and the Licheate. We need to treat out PFAS from the Licheate at the Kentwood landfill. Both of those facilities are closed. And then we need to treat out the Licheate, or the PFAS from the Licheate at the South Kent landfill, which is an operating facility. We've received an engineer's estimate of probable cost, but until we actually go through that 75% design, we can't really come back with a GMP. In our business, the reality is, you know, we do spend, I think our, our budget going into 2026 is $70 million. We have equipment that costs a million, trash compactors and roll-off equipment and things. So we're accustomed to those size numbers, but we've not ever had to build out this type of infrastructure for PFAS pre-treatment, which is why we thought two steps would be better. First, determine that guaranteed maximum price, and then come back to the Board for approval.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion passes. That takes us to 5B, coming from the Drain Commissioner's Office, the Nash Creek Inter-County Drainage District Bond.
All right. Action requested. Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to authorize pledging the county's full faith and credit to the issuance of Nash Creek Inter-County Drain District Bond Series 2025. And just a note, this is for the Nash Creek project, not to exceed $4.1 million, and the county's at-large portion is a little over $130,000, and that is coming in the next action request. We have the Drain Commissioner and Deputy Drain Commissioner here to answer any questions.
Are there any, I'm sorry, is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner McLeod, supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Now, are there any questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Stack.
Would let it go, but I'm wondering if the Drain Commissioner can just briefly describe this project and why we need 4.1 million.
It's, it's, how much time do I get?
It's up to the chair.
This is a project that we started four years ago. It was petitioned by the Township Board, and the issues were, I was, had to do some general maintenance on cleanup on this drain because of the dead ash. And you couldn't even see the drain. There were so many dead trees that had fallen in and over the top of it. So as we were cleaning it out, we've noticed a lot of erosion. And the people in the community were, were telling me stories about the drain used to be two foot across when they bought their property. Now it's 30 foot, in which I've lost all my easements. And there's a pond that was dug by one of the citizens in the village that there, his dad dug the pond and thought he'd develop it, which he couldn't because of the soils. But that pond was 12 foot deep, two acres. And it was, right now, that pond is four inches of water in it. That thing is totally filled up with all the sediment that's eroding upstream coming down. And a lot of changes. It's all farmland, but all the farmers have tiled their fields, which puts that water from the field to the drain much quicker than it did if it just percolated through the soil. So a lot of changes in how we do things has put a lot of pressure on the stream. And then we have, as you get into the village, we've had a lot of erosion along the stream, where one commercial building is at risk. A lot of the roads have been at risk. We've done shore-up to stop the erosion to the, so the roads wouldn't disappear. But it's not enough. And the project has to be dealt with upstream. We can't address all that water downstream. And then we have the problem with the village chronically flooding on high-water events. Couple times, it was so bad that the, all the buildings on Main Street had about six, seven inches of water in them. A lot of damage. But there's always, there's always high-water flooding there, and it just hits so hard. So the Township then petitioned me. I had a conversation with them, says this should be dealt with as a large project, not just piecemeal. And they agreed, so they petitioned and the Board. It's Inter-County with Ottawa County. So then the, the Inter-County Board listened to all the arguments, and they agreed. There was no dissension in that decision. So we went forward and started to the, hire an engineer, and we started putting the project together. I was out of that. At that time, it was estimated to be an $8 million project by the engineers first look at. I was able to secure $2 million from state budget that year for this project. And then we're able to secure some, some grants, or not grants, but some trees from the conservation district, so we could plant trees along this, this as well. So we'll be doing about a mile and a half of two-stage ditching, and that allows the water to come up and spread out. That slows the velocity. And in that stage, we're going to plant trees. Has not been done before in the state, but I think it's going to be a big asset for stabilizing the ground, absorbing more water quicker than just the grass. But we'll also be shading the stream, which that was a trout stream in its day, and we're hoping that that comes back. So the barriers will be removed. We'll create some, we've been working with Trout Unlimited and a couple other advisory consultants to help us set this up, so we can get the fish, make it able for them to move upstream again. People are excited about that. But there's always some people that aren't. That's a given. But, so that's the project, and that's what has to be done with stabilization. I had to get all new easements on this project, because, like I said, we lost our easements due to erosion. So I had like 43, 45 easements to get re-signed, and unanimous, no problem getting those done. And none of the property owners asked for compensation on those easements. And the purpose was to keep the cost down for the project. And then I personally got them, because I can't charge my time to the district by state law. So that saved about a million dollars on this project, just that piece. And then the other pieces, we And then the other piece is, we end up with a project at $4.5 million instead of $8 million. So, it's overall, at this point, it's been a very successful project. Probably always refer to it as my sweet project of eight years, just because the people are so cooperative, so excited about it. So, now we have to get the project installed, and it has to be better than what everything we've done so far, because it is a lot of money, and we want it to be successful. Another thing that Eagle has given is permit, there's a section of a farm that's lowland, and so we will, when that water comes out past the two-stage, if we're on a high event, it will spill into this wetland. It's all invasive grasses right now. It's just a horrible patch of canary grass. We're going to dig that thing out. We're going to dig it about two foot deeper. And for getting a permit from Eagle to do that, it's just unheard of. But we're working with them on this, and we will then be replacing all that canary grass with actual wetland plugs, plants that are already pre-grown, and seed both, so that the water will flow into this wetland area, retain the water for a short time, or detain it for a short time, and then release it when the stream drops. So, we, again, hold that water back, so we don't flood the village. It's, that's where we have to control is upstream. But then we're also creating a very healthy wetland, and then we'll have to monitor that for five years with Eagle oversight. But they've been really great to work, working with us on this project. We got the permit to do this. I haven't signed it yet. There's some things we'll have to sit down and talk with them on. But it's been a great project, and a lot of collaborating with a lot of different groups on this one, because it's more than what the Drain Commissioner can do.
And the county allocation, what was it, 100?
It's 130.
And the rest of it is assessed to the district?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, given the last one you brought, I thought you'd want to talk about how supportive everyone is on this one.
Yeah. Well, and this is what we have right now. Four years ago, I had five, six big projects like this petition to me, and these things are coming out for bid now. It just takes so much time to get these things bid. I can't do them all in one lump, some, but we got another one following this one. And that one is going to be another, very large at-large. We're estimating, on all these projects, we're right around $700,000, $800,000 at-large that the county will be responsible for with all these projects together. And it'll go on through good part of next year, when we get these all bid and moving. So, this is just another step of what we have to come. I just want you to know that.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. Thank you, Drain Commissioner Yonker.
You bet.
No additional comments or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Takes us on to Five C, from the Drain Commissioner's Office, Nash Creek Inter-County Drain at-Large Appropriation.
Recommend to the Board of Commissioners to transfer and appropriate up to $130,255 to the FY25 General Fund Drains County at-Large Budget. From the General Fund, transfers out budget for the Nash Creek Inter-County Drain. And again, this $130,000 would be added to the $434,420 that has already been appropriated this year.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Halsted. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Any questions or comments on this item? I think... Commissioner McLeod.
So, I just wanted to clarify. So, it sounded like the Drain Commissioner was saying that there would be upwards of $700,000 that we would be possibly needing to support for these different projects. And so, this is going to increase the Assessments Fund to 564. When might the other portions that we're going to be responsible for? Is that going to happen in this next fiscal year, or is it later that that will happen? I guess I just want clarity on that, because it sounds like if there's something else that's coming through, that we should probably be thinking about a different amount.
Yeah, no, that'll be in next fiscal year.
Next fiscal. Okay. Great. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We're on to Five D, from Parks and Recreation, CIP Transfers to Wallfield Park North Development Project.
All right. Action requested. Approve the transfer of $582,031.67 to the Wallfield Park Development Capital Improvement Budget, or Program Fund Project from various other parks, Department CIP Funds projects in the FY25 CIP Fund Budget. And you have a list of seven budgets that have been complete or in no longer need of those funds that would be transferred over. And if you remember, that policy requires any transfer over $100,000 to come to the Finance Committee.
Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner McLeod, supported by Commissioner Stack. Questions or comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are on to our final item for today, comes to us from the 63rd District Court, Employee Business Expense Policy Travel Request.
All right. Action requested. Approve a conference-related travel request under the Employee Business Expense Policy on behalf of the 63rd District Court, Judge Jeffrey J. O'Hara. And just a reminder that the recent policy approval by the Board of Commissioners required that any inter... Out of, traveling out of the continental United States needs to come before the Finance Committee. Previously, that was handled in-house, and this is, I'd say, a routine conference that the judges attend, and it's going to be held in Canada.
Okay. Is there a motion for this item? Moved by Commissioner Green. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Oliver King. Questions or comments on this item? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion pass. That is all of our action items for today. So, we are on to miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner miscellaneous this morning? Okay. Seeing none?